Monday, April 22, 2013. It's honor about 7:00 o'clock. We're going to begin the evening tonight with a public hearing. And I believe the mayor is going to talk to us about some community development block grant funds.
Okay. Letty, I guess. Okay. First of all, this is the CDVG formula money, small cities program money. We usually get funded when we apply about every year. The deadline for it is, I think, is June 21. Those will be the first of two different meetings, two different public hearings that are set. In terms of the money, the public notice actually put out saying it was going to be about $85,000. It's close to 75. Essentially, they do an allocation every year for how much money. Some of them, of course, goes towards Housing Administration Equal Opportunity Housing, or rather discrimination stuff. In the past, we've funded, I think, the Grove and the Slip with some of this money. We use it to leverage other dollars. As I say, there's two public hearings. The first one is to take input, and the second one will probably be as we narrow down what functions we have. Just for definition, CDVG program funds a large range of activities, including economic development projects, street water supply, drainage, sanitary improvements, park acquisition improvements, demolition of safe structures, rehabilitation of housing. As I say, it has to do with a formula that we, that they set up throughout the state. Again, Carpenter, we've done Grove and the Slip.
Mill Street.
What?
Mill Street.
Mill Street. It usually does bits and pieces. We use it actually to leverage other grants if need be. If we have a 20-80 match where we have to put 20% in. So with that, I could always take some ideas. And I know you guys went on a street tour, so you probably have some ideas. You know? And it's up to the public, too, if they have ideas. So at that point, we'll go from there.
Okay. Public who is here, public who is watching, we're looking for your input on what projects you might like to see the city undertake this calendar year?
This would be for 20, yes. See, I think, wait a second, hold on. Let me get the piece of paper. I just buried it again.
Yeah, when is the money awarded?
It'll be awarded in the end, and it probably, it goes over to, let's see, submission deadline is 20, June 21. I believe we have a year to use it. So we usually, we could, we could actually run it through next year, 2014. And it depends, again, realize by June, if you get the award, we wouldn't be able to do any construction anyway. So most of the time, we're running it out to the following year.
So we're looking for projects that could be completed probably next calendar year, 2014. $75,000 approximately. But again, as the mayor points out, this is often just kind of seed money that we use to acquire other grants.
And the last thing I would say is anybody who hasn't signed into the, since this is a public hearing, we have a sign-in sheet over there, so.
I think there's some young ladies back here that didn't sign in, so.
Okay.
The auditor's going to bring it to you. Please sign in for the public hearing. Do we have some, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one question for the public out there. If they have a good idea that they want to propose to you, do they contact you directly or someone else?
Send it to my office. We'll work on, we'll work on it. The idea is we, if we're lucky, we'll end up with several projects that we can vet and look at and see how well it'll fit. And as I say, there will be another public hearing, probably scheduled sometime in the end of May, so we can make the deadline for the application.
Okay.
Yes?
One of the projects that's been near and dear and kind of languishing for me is the house on Richland Avenue.
I'm sorry.
The house on Richland Avenue, we haven't been able to use other fundings like the CHIP and what have you, but it's my understanding we may be able to look at that again for this, make it a handicapped accessible, and then contract it through the Metropolitan Housing Authority for, because it's right there on a bus line. It's just a really nice little, small, underutilized home.
This is the house next to the fire station, correct?
Correct.
Next to the station, too. And we emptied it out probably about three years ago, four years ago.
Two.
With the intent of trying to get it up and running. But it costs, the estimates were anywhere between $50,000 to $80,000 just to replace the kitchen, the bathroom, the heating system, AD accessibility. And we have, as you know, three houses that are run by Metropolitan Housing Authority already that we own. And this was, this would help them with low and moderate income. And it's, it's a good location. It'd be on the bus route, right next to C and E Grocery Store. So it has a lot.
And the fire station.
And an extra fire station.
And, you know, I've been, every time I go by there, I think, maybe we could, if we worked with, with the reuse store, the restore store that's moved to Athens, maybe we could get kitchen appliances, et cetera, at a more reasonable price.
The restore has mostly used stuff. Is that what you mean, or?
It's used, but tenderly used in some cases.
Yes. We, more likely, we'd have to contract the whole service out, and then, you know, we could actually guide them to actually using restore stuff, habitat, free manatee material. It's an interesting question, how much we can actually, you know, push somebody to do something like that with contractor.
True.
It was an idea.
Again, the mayor suggested we'll probably have another meeting regarding this near the end of May. So please, as you're driving around the city, look at opportunities. So now we're going to move on with our committees. Finance and Personnel Committee. The chair, Chris Nysley, is out of town. Member Steve Patterson will be leading the show here.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be three items tonight. The first one is an IT assessment report where the IT throughout the city or throughout the departments was looked at to include electronic bill payment, computers, networks, and things like that. And I'm going to turn it over to Tom Reed, who's going to present on the IT assessment report.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the City of Athens project. Been a longtime resident since 1980 of City of Athens, so really my home. And IT assessment report is something the mayor commissioned as an effort to understand where the city is. Re-Consulting Group is my company. We've been in business here since 2006. I'm also an executive resident at the College of Business at Ohio University. What the mayor asked us to do was to come up with an assessment of the existing IT infrastructure with the following goals. We wanted to align the IT resources to meet the public service goals, to generate a prioritized list of issues that we need to address, to review relevant industry trends associated with municipal governments, create a three- to five-year technology roadmap, make some recommendations on how to minimize total cost of ownership, and then provide some guidance on methods to achieve industry best practice. The, it was really good news in the initial assessment. It's actually the only initial assessment I've ever done. Done dozens of them, where I haven't come back with screaming sort of, oh, my gosh, we've got to address these five things right away, or your infrastructure's about to collapse. So you've got really good news for the city in that Ron Forrest, your CIO, and others before him have done a very good job, very thoughtful job, in building your existing infrastructure. It's standardized, it's reliable, and it's a pretty complex network. I don't know how many of you have seen diagrams of it. Obviously, it's pretty far-reaching, and it goes everything from networks that are monitoring water meters and pumps all the way up to the applications that the auditor uses. So it's a wide range of services that can be provided by your IT department. From a security perspective, you have a sound security posture, multiple levels of defense inside the city. Nothing can prevent all security breaches. The hackers are way ahead right now of the security community. But in terms of best practice, that best practice is being followed here at the city. Most of the application needs are being met. You'll notice there are some needs that we're going to address later in the presentation, but most of these are being met. Some of those are being met by locally hosted systems, some of them are being met by applications that are out on the cloud. But we do have some key recommendations. And in ordering and prioritizing these recommendations, try to come up with things that really affected the basic functioning of the city as the top priority. And so the very first top priority that popped out is actually a pretty small project. It's to test the electrical ground at the community center. The staff at the community center reported a number of intermittent problems across a wide variety of different systems, our telephone system, our wireless systems, our computers. Frequently, that points to a problem with the electrical ground when you have intermittent problems across multiple systems, and so that just sort of triggered that concern. The, the next project is a bigger one. It's to do power backup and conditioning for critical city facilities. And we all remember the derecho with climate change seeming to be a reality, the storms are just going to become more powerful. And at the same time, our electrical grid is becoming less reliable. Unfortunately, whether it's because of deregulation or just the way budgets work, the power companies aren't modernizing the grid fast enough. And so the grid's not as resilient as it used to be, and then we have these huge storms. That combination creates, in my mind, an onus on the city to pay attention to the power generation needs to keep the city operational 24/7, 365, regardless of what Mother Nature throws at us. So we identified several areas in the report need generators. The first is we're suggesting a shared generator that'll serve City Hall and the Law Building so we can keep all the key functions in, in these two buildings operating. During the last derecho, the police department was able to keep functioning, but just barely, by having someone stationed on top of the building continuing to pour water into the dilapidated generator that was serving that location. Kind of next order down, oh, did that location that we, the community center is slated to get a generator from the wastewater treatment plant. That makes a lot of sense. Should go through with that. It's an emergency shelter, so, and a cooling station, so it's an important location to keep up and running. And then the kind of third priority would be, let's get over to EPW with the generator. While there, might as well connect it to the code office as well, so we can keep those offices running as well. At that point, we basically have the city operational. The Roosevelt Tower's already generator backup, so that's a good thing. And the primary fire station is already well-served by generators as well. Next level down is unoperable power supplies. These are just little battery-operated units to put under your desk to power the PCs. Some units in the city have them, some don't. It's just kind of silly not to, because it protects against a lot of surges, brownouts, as well as the kind of spikes that come during lightning storms. So it's just a good investment in terms of maintaining operational stability of the city. And then further down that list is if we're doing something big, like putting a generator in, we might as well put in a building power filter as well. Again, it deals with a lot of transient voltages, our power grid is not very stable. And you might not even notice these transients, like a brownout, but your electronics are noticing it, and it's very damaging to the electronics. So you're just going to get a better overall life with a relatively small investment, a lot more stability of your system. Third priority is backup to critical data. And in all cases, backup is happening on the big server environments, but they aren't being tested. You've got to test the backups. You can get a green light from your backup software saying, yeah, everything worked fine. Then the hard drive crashes, you go to restore, and there's nothing there. So it's very important that the backup process is actually being tested as well. And then we also have a number of PCs, individual user PCs with critical data on it. Again, the backup is kind of questionable. Some people are copying it from external drive and taking it home. It's just kind of a mishmash of different things to back up that data. So we're suggesting an organized backup process just to document and make it more routine, a testing process. And that can happen with on-premise sort of equipment, or it can also happen with cloud backup now. So with all the internet capacity, we can back it up to a distant location, and you can have it replicated to multiple sites. We can restore it from anywhere, so if there was really a big problem, we could go to Columbus and bring up the server and pull the files down for the city and be operational again. Priorities four and five, staffing of IT. I think at this point, it does make sense to expand the IT staff. One person to maintain all this is difficult, and it's also, there's big exposure. So something happens to your CIO, either temporarily or permanently, he's really got an awful lot of the knowledge and capability. You need that second person to provide that. Also suggesting a formal cross-training process, so you bring in that central, that second IT person, and make sure that there's cross-training going on so they really can step in. But also some cross-training of either some other staff that have some technical aptitude or technical responsibilities, or even management staff, where we, you'll hear later, we're developing these playbooks that document different parts of the network, so that someone can pick that up and go, oh, the telephone network's down. What do I do? Oh, here are the key contacts information, here's the service contract number, here's what to expect from them, so that people can carry on, so you can get more depth. IT is your lifeblood. It's the lifeblood of every organization now. So this kind of cross-training just gives you a little bit deeper bench in terms of responding to problems. Over the life safety side, there's a number of, of needs that we ranked pretty high as priority five, grouped into three different pieces. The records management software at APD needs to be upgraded. Upgrade has been delayed by the software company, not by APD. So when that software does become available, it makes a lot of sense to move forward. There probably needs to be an assessment of whether that software company is viable long-term. If it is, it's the best way to go, but it's a very small company. If it's not viable long-term, APD should probably be looking at a different option from a software perspective. But that's difficult. That's asking a lot of the chief and his officers to actually transition to a new software package. It's disruptive and time-consuming. So if the existing company is viable, that's the best bet. The server infrastructure there is also quite old. There's not really a lifecycle funding process to say, oh, well, it's six years old, here's the money to replace it. So we've got some aging servers, and one of them is running this critical application at APD. Technology in cruisers. We had an officer who was kind of a tech hobbyist that left a couple of years ago, cobbled together technology to put in the cruisers, did a good job, but it's not standardized, it's not entirely reliable. So far, the department's been able to re-equip four cruisers. I think three cruisers are done, one has the equipment on order. I think that needs to be a routine process to finish that out. Again, we'll get to lifecycle planning before too long. The surveillance camera network is the other piece of this. The surveillance camera network on Court Street, the cameras are old, the connections are unreliable, and there's the, the security aspects and life safety aspects of that. There's also some tourism possibilities there. People like to be able to look at the place they went to school, and in a tourism camera, you can even let people control it. So we're suggesting replacing the cameras on Court Street, running fiber optics has been suggested before. Long Court Street, parking garage, APD, and, and here, possible connections to county and university as well when you're doing that. Priorities six and seven, get into some kind of juicier topics in terms of, boy, fund new things, because mostly we've been talking about fixing things you already have. Now we can talk about new sorts of capabilities. And one of those that was expressed a lot in a lot of different departments was the desire to offer online billing and payment. So there's multiple software packages operating in the city that can provide that service that people are using. There's multiple kind of efforts to make that rolling, and what we're suggesting that there really needs to be a citywide task force with very strong leadership to make sure that it's done in kind of a graceful fashion, that gets the money to the right place, as the auditor's is so determined to get, but also that the citizens see a unified interface, that they don't go to one department and see one way to pay a bill, and go to another department and see another way to pay a bill. We need that to be a unified streamlined process. And the only way to do that is to plan that out citywide. Lifecycle tracking and budgeting. This is, again, mostly focusing on what you have and making it still work. It's a really critical piece, is take an inventory of everything that the city has from an IT perspective. Date it, give it a lifecycle assumption, a replacement cost, and then see where the numbers fall out. How much money do we need to budget every year to keep this technology infrastructure that's so essential to our operations in good health? And then you can play with some of the numbers. If the number's too big, you can say, well, okay, if, if we think we should get five years of networking equipment, if we say six, is that enough to make us comfortable with the numbers? If we think a server can make it for seven years, or workstations on people's desktops, can you stretch the lives of them to try to make the budget smaller? But it gives you, you'll have a real sense, once you have that inventory and you know the replacement costs, you'll have a real sense and ability to budget, you know, and forecast what the costs are going to be going forward. Priorities eight and nine, development of diagrams and playbooks. You've got two of those attached to the back of your report. I did not include those diagrams because of some infrastructure sensitivity issues, because they do lay out some of infrastructure of the city. But you'll see one for the Roosevelt Tower network, and you'll see another for the telephone network. That's the last four pages of the report are these first two playbooks. The idea there is to, to be able to get a simpler sense of the different major network components, like the Roosevelt Tower network, and again, create this playbook sort of situation where anybody could step in and know who to call and what pieces are broken. I can tell you, from, from looking at the Roosevelt Tower network, the, the cost effectiveness of it is just tremendous. I wasn't assessing whether it made sense to build it in the first place, because it's already here. But since it's here, your ongoing cost to maintain these very high-speed connections across the city is just unbeatable. There's no way you could go out to a carrier and come anywhere close to those numbers. So now that it's here, it's, it's a great resource and worth keeping. The other piece is prioritization, visibility to IT workload that we really want. Sometimes Ron will be off working on a server failure. So there's a problem in the auditor's office, and we're having trouble making paychecks. Well, that kind of trumps everything, right? Unless it's a problem over at APD. So Ron's got to balance those different priorities, and in the meantime, somebody's calling because their printer's jammed, right? And so they can't see what Ron is doing. Ron doesn't want to stop what he's doing to answer that question, so some visibility in that IT queue would really help in terms of people understanding what's going on in IT. And when there's only one person, well, you don't want them to leave APD or the auditor's office to go fix the paper jam. You don't even want them to stop to answer the phone, because it just interrupts the flow of the work. A status dashboard, we think, would also help with that. And you've got an example of the status dashboard here. There's a number of different packages that are not very expensive. There's even some shareware ones, where you can just basically be pulling the different servers and services. So you can get a green light, yellow light, red light sort of indicator, that anybody could pull it up, see the webpage, see, oh, everything's green, so I guess it's a local problem that I'm having. Or they go, oh, look, the Roosevelt Tower's out. No wonder I can't talk to anything. So it gives the, the user community a quicker glance at what's going on, and for the, for the leadership in the city, it's a really strong tool in terms of, gee, what's first thing in the morning I want to look at? I want to look at my status dashboard and see if, if we've got any crippling problems. And then just a little thing that during emergencies, whatever your emergency response protocols are in the city, that if you're actually, like, in a derecho certain environment, the same way you triage things for other departments, you'd want to triage for IT as well, because IT's going to be running around fixing multiple things as well. And so a triage function is part of your overall emergency response process, makes a lot of sense. Priorities 10 through 13, internet capacity. The university, in combination with the High Academic Resource Network, has offered to sell the city internet capacity at only $7.80 per megabit, which is really cheap. That's cheapest I've seen buying in huge volume is about $3. So $7.80 is pretty cheap. Right now, you're paying much more than that, about $50 a megabit to Time Warner. So it's a really good offer. Many departments in the city are now dependent on services that they get from the internet. So I'm not suggesting you get rid of the Time Warner connection, because it's good to have two, but upgrading the capacity. Right now, the city's connection to the university is a best effort basis. It's a free service. The university offered the city a number of years ago. And it's kind of like you're, you're in the same queue as a student in the residence hall. So you're not getting special priority. They're saying, hey, for $7.80 per megabit per month, we can connect you straight into the internet backbone, and you'll have much more responsiveness. So that's a great deal. It would be silly to pass that up. Arts West, that came up as an issue, that Arts West is moving forward, producing a lot of programs. There's never really been an investment in the network infrastructure of Arts West. Not talking about a lot of money, some wiring, some wireless access, to, to be able to bring the city services more fully into Arts West. Technology training and fluency, this came up a number of times, that people feel like they aren't getting as much out of the technology as they could, and it's a very common issue, that most of the technology still isn't user-friendly enough. And so training, unfortunately, is still an important factor. One of the ideas, you know, that we subscribe to the Lynda.com to be able to get online training. Another possibility is to add in some student interns that actually go around desk-to-desk at different times. For instance, when we want to bring grounds into, join the work order system, well, they kind of need some help. And probably telling them to get on the internet and learn's probably not going to be real effective, versus a student who's willing to sit there and step through the basics with them, be a lot more productive. Improve public Wi-Fi, this came up in a number of areas as well. Some existing locations where Wi-Fi is somewhat problematic, and some of that may be the community center grounding issue, because that's one of the areas where it's problematic. But also some desire for some new outdoor areas, skate park, soccer complex, and so forth, where it might be nice to have public Wi-Fi. And then the last two, priorities 14 and 15, to have IT coordination teams. There'd be kind of three focuses. One, sort of a public relations focus. What's our webpage look like? What do we want to say? What kind of services we want to offer on it? Those kind of things. Another would be a real operational focus. An operational focus, you get into issues of, well, how do we avoid calling IT when we have a paper jam? Or, hey, here are, here, here's, here are the things that are getting old in our infrastructure. We've got the inventory, we know how much money we have to spend on lifecycle. Here's the things that we think we need to replace this year. Do we want to change any of those priorities? How are we going to schedule that and plan that? All those kind of operational issues. And then there's also a number of requests that are in your report but aren't in this presentation, from various departments, of improvements, enhancements they'd like. Well, there needs to be some group that prioritizes that and says, well, some people think we should give all the council people iPads. The fire chief would like us to upgrade his, his software or server instead of a standalone PC. Somebody needs to sit there and weigh those, figure out what, what's most important. And then policy and procedure focus. That's, you know, what are the policies in terms of city employees using the internet? How do we want to offer public Wi-Fi? Those, those sort of issues. And then the final priorities on citizen notifications. There was some concern that maybe we were over-notifying. And when you over-notify, you desensitize, and when you desensitize, then you lose the whole point of notifying. So, and there's also some coordination issues between the county and the city, where the city issues one, the county kind of overlaps it, and then there's a correction, and then there's another correction, and just sort of this ping-pong of notifications, and people go, pfft, how do you make it stop? The county is moving to a new software package. The city might want to consider the same, but what's probably needed more is some coordination, city and county, and also within the city in terms of how we issue these kind of notifications. Wasn't a huge issue, but it was, made it into the top 15. So that's, that's the thumbnail. The more details are in the report itself. And happy to do any Q and A now or in another session.
Thanks, Tom, for doing it. You know, I'm glad we don't have any big red flags out there.
Nope, definitely, definitely not a fire.
Thanks, thanks Ron for doing it.
Yes, definitely.
Jeff?
Well, first of all, thanks. This report is fantastic.
Great.
This is my kind of reading. But I'm really happy that you hounded in on recommendations one through three, because I'm really a fanatic about this sort of thing. And probably bore people to death about it. But in your investigations about power backup and conditioning and so on, and you talked about the police department generator that had the cracked engine block and had a meltdown. Did you look at the, at the, at the water well field, the water treatment plant, and the sewage treatment plant?
No, I haven't. The water treatment plant, I understand that generator is part of the project underway, that it's got a good generator backup right now. I did not look at the well field.
Waste water, he means.
That's a good point.
Okay. Because during the derecho, you know, the well field shut down, we had a major water break, the reservoirs drained out, and there was no power to put water back in the break, the reservoirs drained out, and there was no power to put water back in the reservoir, hence, you know, no water pressure.
That's a really good point. It's a very scary scenario for a municipality.
Especially since we're living through it. You know, it wasn't a theoretical exercise. It's something that the city was actually going through. And, you know, I'm, I agree with you. I think, yeah, we're at a new normal now. You know, we, well, that, the Doratio came through there. I mean, they had to go back through, I don't know, 100 years of research just to find a name for the thing.
Yeah.
And you look at your little radar thing there, I mean, it looks like an explosion coming our way.
Sure does.
So, yeah.
The speed of it was amazing.
Right. The other thing I was interested in was the, the whole idea of training people, you know, within a particular office. Somehow, it always seems like one person in an office, it doesn't matter how big it is or how small, one person somehow, probably by just by the fact they opened their mouth one time too many, they get stuck with, okay, we got a paper jam, you figure out how to unjam it.
Right.
Or, I have a problem with the keyboard, you do your magic and make it work again. And, you know, most of the time that you limp long and you get by. Well, what happens when that person gets hit by a truck, you know, and they don't make it to work that day? Well, why do we do that? Okay? There's no cross-training, nothing going on, because basically, the attitude gets, is, hey, my job is to do X. It's not to do computers. That's someone else's job description. And you need something there that says, well, wait a minute, everybody needs to know how to drive a car. It's not in your job description at the desk, but you still need to get here and you need to get, leave, and you may have to go somewhere. You may get transferred around. Somehow, that attitude has to get embedded into the, into that office that it's everybody's responsibility. You know, that computer in front of you, that's your baby, you take care of it. And I'm wondering, how would you address something like that? I mean, how do you change that culture, I suppose?
Car is a good analogy. The, changing that culture is a tough one, because like you said, everyone's focused on their own job. And this is a big problem in IT security. I explain to people why they need to have more complex passwords, or please don't click on that email link. And I go, just, you know, leave me alone. Why isn't it just work? And so it's really frustrating to people that the computer technology isn't easy enough yet, that, well, you know, most of the time, our cars have become exceptionally reliable. You put the key in and you've got a really high probability things going to start. We haven't quite reached that level of convenience with the computer. Imagine if your car took four minutes to boot up? You know, it would be a little frustrating. So the computer industry's really, in my mind, still in its infancy, has a long way to go. So, you know, see Paula with her iPhone there?
What is she doing?
I was trying to call you. But there's no manual. You know, you get your iPhone, it's in a box with a power cord, there's no manual. Now, that's where computer technology needs to go. I do think that cross-training is essential. And if you can't get more people in an apartment, one of the things we wanted to do with these groups was the operational focus group, our goal was to include the people, there's one person in each department that's kind of identified as a liaison with IT. And that, that function hasn't really matured. But that would be another, a way to get us to that point where you've got eight or 10 people that are more interested, more motivated to learn about computers. And so Kathy's in the auditor's office, gets hit by the truck, you know, proverbial beer truck sort of scenario. There's someone right next door that has the same level of capability that can come in and help while we figure out what to do, who, you know, who's next in the auditor's office to take that kind of role. I think it's going to be tougher to get all of the individuals, well, like, you know, over in grounds, it's really tough to get any of them to want to do anything with a computer, let alone all of them. So, yeah, I agree, it's an issue and something we need to keep working on. The cross-training would help a lot. And those, that kind of IT liaison group would help a lot.
That's a good idea.
That would lower the stress for the people who have those main jobs, like Ron currently or whoever's, I mean.
Yeah. And I think that was the original idea with those liaisons, was to be able to take care of some of the really routine sort of things that pop up.
Yeah, we have someone in our office, and everybody was supposed to, that, you know, to deal with Ron and know a little bit more about what's going on. But, yeah, I don't think everybody has that person who really tries to keep up with everything and is truly in charge of tracking the age of the computers and things like that.
The assumption is that in every department, there is somebody who has that proficiency, and it's not always the case. And then there's the aptitude to do that. You know, and again, then they have to be knowledgeable enough so whatever they translate works for everybody else in the office. It's a hard thing to do there. We just, we tried putting that together a couple of years ago, but, you know, if you get somebody, you realize there's always turnover in our department as well, so you've got other aspects there too. And technology change.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Ron, for getting us and steering us in the right direction here. Question I had, Tom, was regarding your recommendations. So you have them numbered. Are they prioritized?
Yes.
So one through three are ones that you feel are significant and really need to be tackled immediately or most?
There's probably 45 requests. A lot of those I put down into, hey, these are things that need to be prioritized sometime later. So, yeah, the top three affecting a basic ability to operate the city.
Okay.
And I do want to go back and talk to the water plant folks to find out what their situation is, because that's another important piece of it. But, yeah, those are the top. But that puts APD all the way down at five, and it doesn't really reflect the importance. But, you know, APD is up and they're functioning, so it's not like, it's, well, and APD would be taken out by the electrical problem. So, you know, getting the backup generator helps all the critical departments, including APD. And then we get down to the number five, I think it's still really important to address priority number five. And, you know, even to get down to, I don't know, was Arts West 13 or something like that? It's important, Arts West.
Right.
And I didn't mean to say it's not important, but just as I tried to sort these in priority order, is where they bubble sorted.
Remember Paul?
I understand the priority according to wants and needs. However, I think that we need, as a city, to look at priorities also according to how much they cost, because it may be one of the lower priorities, may be cheaper to do, and we can do that first and budget, because our budget is really tight. And so we may not be able to buy a $75,000 generator backup for whatever, but we may be able to start training the other people. So I want to not have people just glom onto the priority one, two, and three, but also look at the priorities in relation to budget. And some of them are cheaper, they may raise to the, to the higher priority with being able to do training and in-house training and those sort of things, so.
Sure, these are my opinions on priority. So as an advisor to the city, that's what I'm suggesting, that obviously the city can reprioritize.
It would be good if we knew, you know, with little, like, dollar signals, you know, this is a cheap priority, this is an expensive priority.
Right.
That would help us, because we may be able to say, hey, we can spend $2,000 to get an in-house trainer to do the cross-training in the next three months, as opposed to doing something that's getting Arts West or one of those more expensive things. And then they would all be able to be done, and we don't have to go, and it's not like a checklist, you do priority one and then you go to priority two, so.
I like the dollar sign approach.
Yeah.
Instead of actually giving it a dollar number, you know, how many, how many dollar signs?
You know, relative expense for each one.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
May I?
Auditor.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too. But I just want to kind of point out also that he has backup of critical data as number three. And that is becoming more and more important on a, like, state level from our auditors. And we're working with Ron now to get some secondary backup for our office. It's, and I'm sure Tom would agree with this, but the legislature and the courts are way behind as far as laws and technology and getting those things in place to control that. However, in the court system, they are really jumping all over that. And our municipal court has a notebook like that about backup and disaster recovery is what I would call it, too. And they had to shut down everything for a day and operate with no computers. And, yeah. And so we started thinking, what would we do? You know, we don't, we don't keep checks, printed checks in our office anymore that we can just handwrite like we did when I first started and things like that. So it's a lot to think about. As I said, Ron is working with us right now, and, you know, he could probably help with a lot of that money and time involvement, too. But I just, I, what I want to do is encourage council and the administration to really look at these and try to keep moving. I mean, I keep trying to do this within my office. As I said, we do have a person, an IT point person, and we work with Ron. And we are trying to keep up with our backup and recovery and training, but it's hard. And I have a small office, and we all sit in front of computers, as Tom said, not all employees have that kind of access either, so I just.
Service safety director.
I just wanted to make a comment about the water treatment plant. And yes, it is indeed a critical facility, as we all know. What the city engineer has stated is he doesn't want to expend up to half a million dollars to purchase a generator that will operate an aging plant. That's going to come along with a greater project here in the near, near future. I know we just are starting on the wastewater treatment plant, but the water treatment plant is going to need upgrades, and that would be combined in that project.
Makes sense. Other council members?
And again, we try, we did buy a generator a couple of years ago, fairly large one to move around the city as power went out. What I'm hearing here, of course, in terms of backup information, is that we really should be doing a test and see what happens. The way I understand what you're saying, Mr. Reed, is that we've got, you know, we store the data, but we never make sure it's still there and that we can actually, you know, unravel it.
Try to re-story.
Yeah. So there, again, this is a, this will be an ongoing process. The reason why we started this is so we knew we're going in the right direction and some kind of goals. How fast we use them is another matter, depending on the dollar signs, of course, but, you know, in terms of something like a generator, we may not do it this year, we could start saving our pennies for next year. You know, it's not, it won't go as a, like a light switch to get all this done.
Audience members.
I just have one follow-up. I think I heard you, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but did you say that in some departments, backups were being, were being taken home?
Yeah, individual PCs.
Is that?
It's not the, it's not really what you want to have happen. It wasn't sensitive data. It wasn't like taxpayer information, anything like that. But it's, yeah, it's not what you want.
Doesn't seem quite proper to protocol to me, that any city information would leave city premises for any reason.
Yeah.
No matter how unsensitive it may be. I mean, tactically, it's.
Well, okay, realize it's public records, so in theory, if you go out the door tomorrow if somebody asks. Not for the whole hard drive for.
Right.
But on the other hand, if, you know, if this building falls down, you have everything in one building, that's a problem, too. So you put it on the cloud, I guess.
Well, if it was auditor's data being carried home, that would be a different issue.
Or police data.
Or police data, right.
It's not us. We put that in there right now. It's not us.
Any form of best practice backup always says you do it off-site to a secure location, which is then limited by the number of people who have access to that site.
Right.
And that's just standard industrial procedure. So what that secure site would be, it could be a bank, it could be a vault, it could...
Well, that's really nice thing about the cloud backup. It's, you know, it's encrypted, stored, and, yeah, well, depends.
Of course, one of the problems we had with the Doratio was you could have had all the cloud in the world, but never been able to get to it.
True.
You were cut off completely. I mean, even the cell phone towers died after two days. So, yeah, oh, great, it's in the cloud, my goodness, it's annoying.
No, it's true.
Right.
It'll be there when you can get there.
Yeah, nine days later.
Ms. Reed, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Probably we'll come to you with more questions than anything else.
Thanks, Al.
Please give us some computer access, huh?
Both as iPads.
We're going to move on to our lease agreement with the Presbyterian Church regarding their parking lot. Who wants to just talk about it?
I can go ahead and handle that. Mr. President, again, this is a three-year renewal of, on a lease agreement with First Presbyterian Parking Lot, Church Parking Lot, which is over on College Street. For this particular parking lot, what we're looking at is probably a 3% increase, somewhere around $40,000 a year to lease this. This is a parking lot that the police department uses, if I'm not mistaken. It'll also probably require some resurfacing, but aside from that, again, this is to continue on the lease agreement that we have.
When you say resurfacing, are the lesors responsible for resurfacing?
We are.
It's on us.
Leasing.
We're not moving the police department soon, and they, we're going to do, the negotiations this year have done crack ceiling during this term and then future paid.
So we're responsible in addition to paying $40,000 a year?
We also receive income, I'm sorry.
On what?
From rental. I'd say it's almost about even between if we had to go out and rent these spaces for the patrol cars to be, and then.
Okay. Thank you.
Part of it has to do with the, oh, sorry, go ahead. Part of it has to do with the location. I believe in the Hendrick administration, they refused to lease it one year or rent it that year. And of course, the cars had to be parked all over the street, parking garage, and I'm told it was a mess. It was before my time, but I, those with longer memories and you look at that history.
My question was, is this, both the parking lots, it's right next to the police building?
Upper and lower.
And the lower.
Okay. Both, I think we rent out the lower.
We do rent out the lower, and then we also, they reserve, I believe, five spaces for their own operations.
Church functions.
I thought we resurfaced this a few years ago.
We did. That's why I've asked for crack ceiling in this term and then resurfacing in the next term.
When is this lease up?
I think it's June, isn't it July?
It's not July, but we wanted to get it started.
The last item is on a good note, and that is the TIF, the tax increment financing, which I believe we've already appropriated $250,000 for this year. And so it'll be a renewal of the note for our final payment on this large project for $250,000 coming up next year.
Wonderful. And it's paid for.
And it's paid for.
Then we can start over. Yeah.
Then we'll find.
It's 520.
The money will keep coming in, so we can use it for maintenance and other projects.
Yeah, this is a, is a 30-year TIF, which started in 2002, 2032.
Comments or questions regarding finance and personnel? Okay, we're going to move on to the Transportation Committee, Boogie on the Bricks. Judy Palmer's going to talk. We have, am I working here? We need to go over there, I guess, Judy. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Judy Palmer. I am the chair for Boogie on the Bricks. And I'm here to propose five city ordinances that would allow Boogie on the Bricks to occur on July 20th of this year. So the first ordinance is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street, Union, Washington, and State Streets on Saturday, July 20th, to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 21st, 2013, for Boogie on the Bricks, which were, actually, it's been a family music festival, we're going to add arts in there, too, a family music and arts festival. So I ask that it be ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, and Section 1, the mayor and service safety director are hereby requested at their discretion to implement the following. I don't have to go over all that.
You can talk generally, too.
Okay.
I guess they're fairly familiar with this.
Okay. So then just go over each one of the...
What you would like.
Okay. I apologize. So the first section of that would be to close vehicular traffic on Court, Union, Washington, and State Streets from 7:00 a.m. on Saturday to 1:00 a.m., then on Sunday. Having the intersection from, see, we would not need the intersection on Union, so we would close it all the way to there. And we're planning on doing the community showcase of that section from Union to Washington. And then the middle, the intersection there, Washington and Court, would be a food court. And then the middle, the intersection there, Washington and Court, would be a food court. And then from that intersection to West State, yes, would then be where we would close off for the Beer Garden area. And then the one stage this year, so that we would have that intersection on West State and Court would be where the stage would be. Music would be from 12:00 PM on Saturday to 11:00 AM, or 11:00 PM. And so we're, with that, with that first ordinance for asking to close a portion of the Court, Union, Washington and State Streets, I also ask about the ban park, you know, banning parking from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM Sunday. Do I go through each ordinance?
They're the same ones that we had last year, I believe.
Yes.
So they're just sort of the basic, basic ordinances for this type of event. So I don't think you need to.
Okay.
Unless you'd like to.
No, I would not like.
If we ask if there's anything different besides the arts.
Are there any changes this year, any additions or?
Um, the, like, as I mentioned a moment ago, the only change that we're really going to do, last year, we had the entire section from West State to West Union as the Beer Garden area. We're only proposing the West State to Washington as the Beer Garden area and then the community showcase, which would include, we're going to invite nonprofit organizations, performing arts organizations, and then just local, regional artists to present. And of course, nonprofit organizations would not have to pay the vending fee, but we would be requiring a vending fee for all others. And the food court would be there at that intersection of Washington and State. So that's kind of where that difference is going to be.
Washington, huh? That sounds great.
This, so this is, for the second year, will be separate from brew week.
Yes.
And is, how has that been in terms of last year's event?
Yeah, last year was the first year that we separated from brew week and there, I think that, that you could tell that there was definitely a difference, but not much of a difference, and we're really excited to kind of go and build on that this year. Yeah.
This is a good time.
We love Boogie on the Bricks.
It's a great event. Thank you for your role in organizing it.
Absolutely, thank you.
And we should have five ordinances next week. One was regarding a glass-free zone. The other one was, as we've done in past years, is to suspend parking fees in the parking garage for part of that day.
Noise ordinance would be one.
And making sure that it's exempt from the noise ordinance, so we don't shut down our own party. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, do you have something?
We do have a miscellaneous, and it kind of nicely follows on the tales of a great Athens event to what hopefully will become another great summer event, which is, going to be hearing more about this in the future, and this is coming to us from the Athens Foundation to have essentially what's going to be called Bounty on the Bricks. Bounty on the Bricks will be a, essentially a fundraiser to where part of Court Street, hopefully from Union to Washington, will be closed down and essentially have one long dining room table running down through Court Street. And we'll have local foods being served, there will probably be some beverages as well, wine, as I understand it. The proceeds from this fundraiser will go to the Athens Food Pantry, as well as the Food Bank. The, they're hoping to have 200 to 300 individuals attend this particular event and hoping to raise somewhere in the order of $15,000, which is a large sum of money that would go, again, 100% profits would end up going to, or 100% of the proceeds would go to, again, the food pantries and to the Food Bank. This is August 10th, August 10th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Some of the things that'll be required would be, again, putting forward an ordinance for a street closing from Union to Washington on Court, as well as opening, being able to use the parking garage, and then also, this will be a glass-free zone as well, this will be a glass-free, aside from the wine bottles, they will have glass bottles, but I don't think we want wine served out of cardboard boxes, but I suppose we could, we have to.
Steve, what's the time again on that?
6:00 to 10:00 PM. On August 10th.
More information to come.
More information to come. From what I understand, there will probably even be a presentation that comes forward from the Athens Foundation.
Good. Member Reisner?
Will there be any attempt at recycling or composting waste products or anything?
That I don't know. That's not in the information that I have in front of me. I imagine that probably will be high on the priority list, though, to have that done.
This seems like it's a logical step.
It shouldn't be too difficult with a long table.
They're calling it a true farm-to-table event, so actually, would not invite other vendors in, and they also wanted to have a truck there to collect canned goods at the same time off to the side, so pretty nice.
Anything else? No. City and Safety Services Committee, a couple things.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple requests here from the Public Works Director. First is to address improvements to our aging water lines, specifically the Patton Street, Arden Street and portions of Marietta Street. So there's a request for appropriation and authorization of $75,000 to undertake this as an in-house project by the department. Are there any other details that you'd like to share on that one?
We went by this on the street tour, as you'll recall, but at the same time, he's also incorporating the 2013 annual paving, just adding that portion to it, if I understand.
Okay. Which would then appropriate and authorize $375,000 for the breakdown, for the project improvements or the pavings, correct? A list of streets here that I can go ahead and run off to help the...
Again, still deemed tentative, but, yeah.
Tentative, correct. So on the list include, included here, Hanlon, North Schaefer, Miller, Arden, Patton, Greenbrier, Meadow Lane, Morris, Hope, Evans, Kurtz, Watt and Cos Street, with alternates being North Shannon and West Washington. And then, and that's from our annual paving, resurfacing from local funds. With resurfacing by other project grants and local funding would be the Columbus Road, Lancaster Project, and then University Estates Project, assuming that those are going through, which is to be expected. So those are the requests from the Public Works Department. Any other comments or thoughts?
I just need to ask a question on North Congress. Is that part of the repair after the water line break? I mean...
I don't know, you were on the street tour, weren't you? Were you on the street tour?
Um, yes, I was.
North Congress?
I don't see North Congress, I'm not...
I said North Lancaster. North, I don't believe North Congress was on the list.
You've been on North Congress. We are repairing via Hot Mix right now, but it is not slated for the annual paving.
For full paving. And Andy likely can address that as probably something that would be addressed in the next two or three years.
And again, the asphalt plants are open, so there's a link on our website, Three Porter Pothole, get them filled, get them going.
I'd like to point out that, as we've talked about here and on our, on our infrastructure tour, is that there is a procedure that Andy Stone goes through, and there's a lot of different variables that go into his model that then prioritizes the streets that come out the other end of the model for paving. And we, we do not have enough money in our account for the next seven years to pave everything. So it has to be understood that there is priorities and I understand, you know, people want their street paved, but there is a process that we go through and it's not just throwing a dart on the map. So Andy is more than happy to send you the scores that each street has. Actually, that was in the infrastructure, well, he had it on the infrastructure tour, he had the whole list. And it, and it gives a priority ranking and a number ranking, so this is, you know, well thought out and it does have priorities and is a procedure that is, is done by other communities and such.
Well, and I would also note that Patton is on the list, and that's where he's doing a water line repair. So that he tends to do those two things at the same time.
Correct.
If I remember right, on the, on the tour that we took, Andy had mentioned that he was going to put that handout.
It should be up already. We put it up as a PowerPoint, I believe.
As a PowerPoint, okay.
Yeah.
So it's already on the website for everybody to take a look at?
Last I heard, I haven't, I haven't checked it out myself, but I sent it to the...
Good. I just want a lot of other people to realize that, you know, this is, it's out there, they want to look at it, there it is, they'll understand it.
Actually, I was hoping they could convert to PDF, but every time I tried, slide number 23 would drop out of the mix, which I think is a timeline for assessments, I don't know what that means exactly. I tried it two different ways.
You missed the deadline.
Did not succeed. It kept disappearing for some reason, I don't know why.
Need cross-training and PDF-ing or something.
I guess, well, it's probably what kind of graphics put in, I don't know what's going on there. And again, some of the other priorities, when you do look at street ratings, the infrastructure and the need, as you probably told you, in terms of what needs to be done, what we can do.
Right.
That's some of the expensive side of it.
Exactly, yeah. It was a good tour, learned a lot from it.
Yeah. I think we do many things very good in the city, and I think one of them is big projects, big infrastructure projects, bridges, big water projects that we've, we've seen over the last couple of years. I think one of the things we don't do well is make sure that the smaller day-to-day stuff like potholes and general street upkeep, I don't think we do as well at making sure that that, that has a high priority. And one of the things that I asked for last year, when I took over as Chair of the Transportation Committee, was that we increase the amount we spend on annual paving, and we did by almost $100,000. And the proposal for this year is a decrease from that amount. Last year, we spent $415,000. Proposal was close to that, it's $375,000, but I hate to see it drop. In some years, it, it falls into the, you know, $220,000 or lower. And so personally, I would like to see the city have a strong year-to-year commitment to the annual paving projects. And I know that it varies because we have, if we have a big project, say the Roundabout, we have different resources that we need to move for, for different things, but I would not like to see the amount we spend on our annual paving projects decrease. And I don't know if that's something we can budget for or not this year.
Well, okay, if you remember, what, two years ago, we had the 0.1% income tax increase, which gave us a bump up. The Roundabout was very expensive, that bridge was expensive, Oxbow Bridge is going to be done this year.
Bridge in South.
Let's see. What?
Bridge in South.
Bridge in South, we're still trying to pull money together on it. We're, what, still 2 million short for that? Get that rolling.
But I hear what you're saying, and the Hot Mix did open up a little bit earlier, but we always have to wait, and they're out there. We, we get lists on a weekly basis of where they're going to do the patching kind of review.
We do have the Columbus Road, Lancaster Street project, which is going to be expensive. And University Estates, which Member Butler mentioned, and Debbie Walker, whom, notice is not here, again tonight, suggested that at our next meeting, we might need to take a vote on a assessment equalization board for that project. She's already begun having some people who are not happy with the assessment. And so that will be up for first reading, and we might want to suspend at that point because the project is imminent.
And the city auditors reminded me that I believe that we also need the authorization to go ahead and place that project out to bid.
Next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month where council traditionally does not meet. Will the following Monday be okay? Honor or heck, is that, if we move things quickly?
So we will not need an emergency meeting to handle any of these ordinances?
That's, I think not.
I don't think so, but if there is one, I can call one.
You know where we live, right?
She has our email.
I'm sorry, I interrupted the committee meeting. Is there any other miscellaneous?
I don't have any, but we can double-check with the city's service safety director if she has.
I have one, and it comes from our police chief, Tom Pyle, who wanted to express his gratitude, thanks to everyone who served on that multi-house party task force. If you recall, the council president, Jim Sands, convened after last year's debacle of street events and the direction that they gave him to move forward and regarding what seems to be enacting a cultural shift in terms of these multi-house parties taking place on one street, so, thank you.
And so how, how is the feeling about that particular house party, group of house parties?
We feel it's a success in terms of, as much as you can say something of being successful in terms of, from a law enforcement standpoint, of reduced number of arrests, compliance with the regulations and having it, and a reasonable hour, so.
Living over by, you know, all those miscellaneous streets, it was much less hectic and you could go out and, and it wasn't totally overwhelming. So I think, I mean, at one point, I knew last year when the, the fire started and stuff because you could hear, it was like the tribal warfare chant. And this year, it was just, you know, music happening and it was really, the feeling was much different. So I, I give my kudos to the police chief and the OU police chief and for working together. Everybody worked really well together.
And, and the students that complied, you know, that live in that area, so that's been nice.
I'd be curious from a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that I'm curious, from a safety perspective, if it's possible to determine if there were less trips to the emergency room as well.
That was in the final report, there were a couple of, a couple of runs, and it'd be hard pressed to, for me to say that the event is safe as a whole.
Right.
It's just that what we've had and, and what we're shifting towards is better.
I would agree.
It still costs us money, too.
The trend is more positive.
Member Pape?
So I would say we seem to have a good formula here. The task force was a positive, you know, force of nature, if you want to call it that, in terms of what they came up with. This Number Fest, I think we probably need to somehow think about how to work with that because a lot of the issues, health and safety issues, are happening here in the city. Yes, they're happening out there in the county, but they're also happening here in the city.
We're having discussions.
So I just wanted to throw that out there as another, I know this environment that we live in, but I think that's another concern, is what is going on with that and what we may be able to do to provide better health and safety.
Yes, we're, we indeed are having discussions, not convening and getting other state entities and local entities to the table to discuss making that a safer event.
Or a not event, whichever happens first.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I, I too just want to acknowledge the work that Chief Pyle, as well as Chief Powers at Ohio University, in, in terms of kind of collaborating and working together on having what are successes, it's, it's simply using the tools in the toolbox that existed already and applying them. The other thing that I've often been curious about will be to kind of look at a cost analysis to see what comes out. You know, these are expensive, I know that we are paying for the extra manpower, but it is interesting with being able to... but it is interesting with being able to provide a safer environment, what it's gonna look like, dollars and cents-wise down the road, in terms of any cost savings. There may be, there may be none, but it'll be interesting to follow up and see how that falls out.
I have one other.
Yes?
I also want to comment on the Friday, that the private property owner took it upon himself, Mr. Cornwell, to provide some structure and some rules for the event that was gonna be happening on his party, and that apparently made a significant difference at that event. So he took some cost on himself, but I think that was, I wanna say kudos to Mr. Cornwell for that. I think that was an important step as well. Like to see more property owners do that.
I think that, from what I hear, things were much better this year, and so that sounds like a very good outcome. I wonder what the formula is. We heard it's a good formula, and it's, it's working. What is the formula? When is it decided? It seems like our city's approach is to, at a certain point before sunset, shut things down so that there isn't the possibility of it tipping over, whatever that tipping point has been in the past. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm asking, what is the, what is the exact formula, if there is one?
What the, the formula that was utilized during this past weekend, Saturday night specifically, was indeed noting warning houses. And so I would say, if not all, the majority, if not all, that were indeed shut down due to the nuisance party, had received a warning in advance. So that's what we utilized. As you know, we don't have to, but we went ahead and had that so that we had documentation in case there was an actual citation issued. My understanding, there was one, so.
I guess more to my question would be, is there a time period when the city says, okay, we need it to be calm by this point in time, or what's, what's the threshold that the city uses to determine the level of response, or is it just, as it, as the, as it develops thing of the day?
It has to be as it develops, and when you have parties that spill out into the street and all the way across the street, which occurred on Saturday, that's a violation.
That's a threshold.
And that's, you know, that, you know, if you allow that to grow, then, you know, when you lose the street, you'll lose it. So, we're not doing that anymore. Stay on your property, keep it cleaned up, you know, be responsible for your guests and your place, and it'll be all right.
And just, just one last comment, and this is something that I've thought might be a solution for years, would be, for like this private property owner instituted structure and rules that kept things orderly. Personally, I believe, I don't think it's gonna happen, but I believe that if the city were to take a similar approach, in which we said, we're going to allow the festivities to take place from this time to this time, and then, you know, they're gonna have to, it's gonna have to end, I think that that type of structure would also be an answer. Different, I'm not sure if it would be as, as successful or just as successful as the one we're taking now.
Oh, you're talking about council actually closing the street, or are you talking about sanctioning parties? And one of the difficulty, of course, is getting somebody to actually show up and say, yes, I'm responsible for this party, and therefore I'll be responsible when it all goes astray. You're talking about, you know, twenty houses here that may show up to that, you know, sign on a dotted line for that or not, so.
I, I don't know exactly what I'm talking about here.
Oh, okay, well, that's what I'm asking, I mean...
It's an idea.
Sounds like a slippery road.
It's an idea.
If you wanna sanction Palmer Fest next year, you're welcome, well, you can be there next year to do that.
It's, it's an idea that the city would say, that the city would say, we're gonna, you know, have a good time, you know, have fun, come eight o'clock. It seems like what we're doing is we're, we're saying, you know, a little bit after dinner, we're gonna shut things down. And I think that if we explicitly said, a certain time of the day, we're gonna come in and make sure that everything's, you know, relatively quiet and, and calm, I think that that would be one form of, of letting the people know that are participating, what is expected of them.
I guess I just want to say that I don't see that the city would in any way sanction illegal behavior. If they're not in compliance with the nuisance party or the noise ordinance or what have you, they're not in compliance, but that's my first response.
If I could have, have one reply to that, and that is, when we passed the changes to the nuisance law, we were told they would be enforced one way, and they're being enforced in a different way.
Unless it was deemed egregious, and I would say, standing out there, I could've shut down the majority of the parties by four o'clock in the afternoon. And a number were, a couple of them were, based on what was occurring, so.
Okay.
We have, we have...
I just kinda wanna, to add to that, is that, again, Service Safety Director mentioned that spilling out onto the street, that was one of the things that prompted this. And so conversely, if there wasn't spillage onto the streets and people were staying in their yards, I mean, there really is no time limit to these fests, well, reasonably to these fests.
Well, except for noise. I mean, when you can hear it ten blocks away, you already know that they are going, they're already breaking the noise ordinance. And so, I mean, the, the city has, is trying to do a balance with, you know, people, trying to keep it from getting out of control, which it has in the past. And I think that when you start saying, oh, well, where, you can go and do whatever you want until eight o'clock, it's, that's just not something, that's not being responsible for the city, because then it looks, they are putting the safety personnel in a really tough situation, you know, and so I would, I think that, that, you know, it's a, it's a balance with the city saying, well, we're not gonna have anything, we're just gonna put the cops out on the street, and you can't go out of your house, you can't step off your property, to saying, oh, well, you can do everything until eight o'clock at night or ten o'clock at night, and then we're gonna shut you down. I don't, that won't work. Yeah, I don't think that would work, so. Like everything, it's a balance, so.
Again, reminder, next Monday is the, is the fifth Monday of the month. We will not have a council meeting. Don't turn on your TV, wonder where we are.
We can put a rerun on.
We will, I'm sure.
No, nobody else? We're gonna call this meeting adjourned. Eight eighteen.